A motion to approve the agenda. Joe, I think you're muted. But it looks like you put your hand up.
He did. I think he's trying to figure it out.
There you go. I figured it out. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Bree. All in favor? Next on the, that motion passes. Uh, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from April 12th, 2021. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes or to adjust the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
I second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Now we move on to the, um, the appeals. For this meeting, the first one on the agenda is the matter of an appeal from John Steinberg at 25801 Dundee. For variance to the maximum house side ordinance, house size ordinance, Article four, District Regulations, Section forty dash four point zero three, R one A through R one E. One family districts, the request is for a variance of six hundred fifty square feet to allow a total house size of three thousand four hundred thirty-three square feet where two thousand seven hundred fifty square feet is allowed. Um. Who do we have on? Uh, is Mr. Mosseif on again?
He is. Um. Andy, you should be set up to be a co-host so that you should be able to present anything that you like, document wise or photo or, there we go.
Oops. You see it?
Yep.
All right, um. All right, this project is to, um, expand the house, uh, by reconstructing the existing attached garage on the south side of the house. And uh, with a, a bit larger garage with a, uh, second floor. There currently is no second floor to the house. Um. This is a view of what we are proposing. You can see the garage to be added. Where the existing one is, uh, right now, it's, um, uh, somewhat typical, uh, Huntington Woods garage that's too small for what the size of current cars as well as their, uh, all accoutrements of, uh, uh, modern life. In blue, I'll zoom in a bit. Roughly, the, the green is roughly the, uh, the property line. Uh, to the south here, I exceeded a little bit. But the blue represents the existing garage, the orange is the proposed addition. Uh, we, the garage footprint stays within the existing, uh, boundaries and is, uh, uh, able to be constructed by right. What we are asking for is, uh, permission to expand the second floor. Back to the render, I'm going to see a second floor. Second floor be most, the purpose of the expansion of the second floor is mostly for storage. The house again is, um, uh, honey to older Huntington Woods home with smaller garages and blue, you can see the, shooting not garages, but closets. And, uh, to increase closet space for the, uh, primary bedroom. Uh, the blue highlights the existing closets on the second floor. Um, and specifically for the primary bedroom, there's very minimal closet space. And the only logical place to expand it is towards, is over the garage. That red line represents the barrier between the existing primary suite and the rest of the house. It's, the, the bedroom is, uh, hemmed in by the stair and hallway and the primary bath and the hall bath. Leaving us, uh, the only, over the garage has been the only, uh, path of, uh, expansion. This is a view of the second, or excuse me, the first floor again highlighting the proposed garage and the orange color and red being the, excuse me, the existing garage and the orange color, the red being the expansion. And then this is to illustrate the, uh, basement. The, the area in orange is, uh, the addition that was done in the eighties. It's all on a crawl space. It doesn't provide any additional basement storage space beyond what was uh, originally constructed. And there is not very much down there, as you can see. Uh, much of it taken up by a mechanical and laundry, laundry space. So that is what, uh, we are here to discuss and ask for, uh, uh, a variance to, uh, to expand the house beyond. Uh, the owner, uh, John Steinberg is here to, uh, discuss the practical necessities of, uh, doing this uh, addition and I will turn it over to him. I assume he's, he's there. John?
I'm here. Can you see me? Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, and Andy, thank you. Um. As you can see, if you look at the, the diagram, the practical difficulties are one, you can't build forward because of obviously there's, um, there's laws that say you can't go further forward. Um, obviously the plumbing prevents us from going the other direction. It's in the way. Um, like you said, our closet space is very small. Another practical difficulty is really the basement being half the size of the house. So we do have trouble with storage. In my house, I have two adult children living with me and one has disabilities that will require her to live with me the rest of her life or my existing life. So we have another adult child who's in school and doesn't have a job. So when you have adult children, they require a little bit more space. They don't have just little toys. They have a lot of stuff. So, uh, I think of that as a practical difficulty. One of the other things is the shape of our lot is, I understand it is cut. So we don't have a rectangular a lot. And from my understanding is there may be some leeway. If, uh, yeah, as you can see the lot line right there.
Right across.
That, uh, it may, that may be some help if, um, you would please consider that. Uh, we also tried to add fenestration to the project to make it more appealing. Um. That was one of the things you thought would be helpful. Uh, I truly tried to listen to you guys at the last zoning board meeting and, um, we cut back the space. As you can see, we didn't go all the way to the, the ends. We, we came in two feet from the front into the side with, um, the idea that maybe we could reduce the square footage to help, uh, conform to what, what you are looking for as well. Um. Really, the, uh, the difficulties for us is it's, the house was from the thirties and, and in the thirties, people lived differently. I mean, we just have more things. We have bikes. We have, uh, again, adult children. So we have a lot of stuff that we do like to store and have. So having a, a larger garage that would fit two cars today would be, uh, I think not such a bad thing to ask for. And, and the space, as you can see, uh, our bedroom, we really do lack storage and closet space. So this is the most practical way to, to fix that.
Thanks, Mr. Steinberg. Unless Mr. Mosseif has anything else, we'll turn it over to Hank for, uh, his presentation.
Um, John touched on it. I, I forgot to say, but John touched on it, uh, that we have reduced the footprint of the second floor from our last, uh, submittal, um, last month.
So, so last time it was, I think, an extra six hundred fifty square feet. Where does that, where does that leave you now?
Um, I don't recall off the top of my head. Uh, Hank, you had the number?
My number differed from yours. Um, what I would do is because I advertised it up to six hundred fifty square feet. If there's a lesser number than what it is, the motion tonight would be to include as presented, subject to planning commission uh, approval and any planning commission criteria that they would have to meet. But it would define the square footage based on the plan. Because we had a difference in the number. So if they were to recommend it or if they were to approve the variance, it would be as drawn or as shown on referencing the document. That's where we would go with that. Andy, can you take this down so that I can go into?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. So, um, Adam, if it's okay with you, I'll go through.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. So this basically is the house that you're looking at here. If everybody can see my cursor, the area in question is over the garage here. The area is not lock covered. The area is maximum house size square footage that they have here. The garage expandability, the expandability of the garage is fine. They're not going to run into any issues as far as that goes. They could do that without anything tonight. If that was your sole project, it isn't. They're going to do this and put a room over the top of it. So the area that's above the top of it right here is they're filling this void, which is a common area to add when you're doing houses and additions in the city of Huntington Woods. The appeal is again, as we went over for the total house size of thirty-four, thirty-three, where two hundred, where two thousand seven fifty is allowed. Again, the house is oversized right now. Um, and the issue is, is that that's why we get to the six hundred fifty square feet. The issue's not that they're adding six hundred fifty square feet over the garage. The issue is that they're already over. So this legitimizes that. You can't give them that, you can't give them the additional square footage for the room without giving them square footage that exists. So you put it all together and go from there. So I want to go through the standard so that you can understand exactly what it is and what has to happen. So the first standard is special unique conditions and circumstances exist, which are peculiar to the land, structure or building involved, which are not generally applicable to other lands, structures or buildings. Typically, houses have some proportional storage built in. The Steinberg house has a first floor of fifteen hundred and twenty-eight square feet. Typically, most homes have full or half basements. The Steinberg basement has approximately eight hundred eighty-eight square feet, out of which a hundred and eighty is mechanical room. A hundred and twenty square feet is the laundry room and fifty-six square feet is a fruit cellar, leaving a total of five hundred and thirty-two square feet. Roughly a third of the basement space that equates to the first floor. While remaining space is usable, it may still be considered substantial and substandard and lacking for a house that has the square footage of this house. Here's a Steinberg basement. Again, if you take a look at it here and I've blown it up. This area here, which is labeled crawl space, is not a basement. It's simply a crawl space. So while this is a good amount of square footage, it's unusable for storage. This unexcavated area is of course the garage. This area here is the laundry space. This area here is the mechanical room, as you see it. This space here would be the fruit cellar that was there when the house was built. And that leaves this area in here for storage. So you're basically looking at less than half of the existing basement for storage area. So this right here, um, that would be one of the issues and I'll get back to that in a couple of minutes. The second standard is the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the general welfare. To date, I've had no adverse comments and I did have a supportive one from the neighbor at the last meeting. The third standard, the special conditions and circumstances do not result as, uh, as action from the applicant. The house original design has a typically small closets associated with the design, as Andy alluded to. There was a nineteen eighty-six addition, which really did not adequately address storage for the family needs. The original design and subsequent addition was not inconsistent with the times, but the appellate is here attempting to address the deficiency here in two thousand and twenty-one. This shows the area that they have for their second story. All of this again, following the cursor and Andy had a graphic for that, to the right of that is all existing. This, up to this area here, if you can follow my cursor, is currently exist. So this is what they have here. So they don't have, the only closet they have is two smaller closets here. And again, remember that their shortage, their storage in the basement is negligible. So what they've done is they've designed and they've changed the design. They've have a room where you walk in with one walk-in closet here and a substantially larger walk-in closet here. They do have a chair in the closet and typically they've added some windows in that space. Um, because quite frankly, they're going to need to for the planning commission. So they put them in now. So as a result, you have this whole area back in here and this whole area in here, which is for storage space. And number four, a literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other, other properties in the same district under the terms of this ordinance, that the variance is the minimum necessary. Assuming that the code provides for a sliding scale, which it does do. Again, the question becomes want, need and or practical difficult. Here, what's interesting is that the square footage that they're actually asking for over and above what the house was already over, roughly equates to the square footage that they do not have in the basement. So what they're doing is, is they're taking this or they're, what they're asking for is they're asking for the square footage that they're lacking in the basement and they're asking for square footage in that amount roughly to be put over the garage so that they can have a similar amount of space. It's just in a different place. So, uh, having, having that, that's kind of how you can equate this to what they need for storage. As far as whether they've got it labeled for a sitting room or that, I can't speak to that. But, um, whether it's storage or whether it allows them to more reasonably utilize their bedroom, is really, uh, something more for like a planning commission, but the use of it uh, being based at the practical difficulty that they were originally asking for was the storage issue. That would, uh, help explain some of the storage issues that they have. Uh, if there's any other questions or anybody would like to see any different graphics, I'm happy to put them up for you. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else.
Thanks, Hank. Um. I'm going to open it up to public participation with respect to this appeal. Is there any, are there any members of the public that are on, um, with respect to this appeal that, that have a comment? Hearing none, I will close public participation and open it up to discussion amongst the board. Um, and whether the board has any questions or comments for, uh, the applicants or Hank. Go ahead, Jim. Oh, Jim, you're muted. Oh.
Yeah, I just wait. You called me. Thank you. I was just wondering, um, was the, this is a question relating to, is it a self-created difficulty or practical difficulty or not? Was the house owned by the same owner prior to the previous expansion in nineteen eighty-six on the basement? Was the crawl space was created?
No, it wasn't.
So that's something that you, uh, when you bought the home, was it already there?
Correct.
So Hank, so Hank, I, I guess my question is, you know, we, we tabled this the last time, the last meeting. Did this go to the planning commission? It sounds like it still needs to go.
It does need to go to the plan commission, but it's going to be subject to whether or not you send it. Um, they've made some modifications in the plan, albeit slight. Um, and they've changed some descriptions of the area. Uh, one of two things would happen here. Actually, one of three things would happen. One, you would approve it and go with the planning commission, subject to planning commission approval and any or all design criteria that have to be met by the planning commission. Two, it would be denied based on the fact that it doesn't meet the criteria necessary for dimensional variance of, for the zoning ordinance. Or three, uh, you would again table it until such time as the planning commission has seen it. Um, what I might suggest is, is it perhaps, uh, maybe you elicit comment from any of the other commissioners that are on and see what, what you have, uh, going with that. Um, and see if there's any comments. Once that's all done, then perhaps you might want to call for a motion. See what the flavor of the board is.
Yep. So let's, we, let's go ahead and open it up to discussion amongst the board.
Adam, I have a, have a question for, uh, for the architect. Uh, I, I see you did shrink the, uh, the area for the storage or above the garage. Is there any reason why it couldn't be shrunk any further?
It, it could. There are some, uh, uh, difficulties in, uh, building over, you know, building partially over a, a span as great as a, as a garage. We, you know, prefer to span from wall to wall rather than, uh, you know, shortstop it. But time and money, anything's possible.
Adam, it might be easier if you just went across the screen and called on
Sure.
your board members, because sometimes it's hard.
Well, I can't see if, I mean, I have everyone open. I just can't see if anyone's raising their hands. Um.
Yeah. You might just call their name.
Mitch.
If you have a comment.
Mitch, Bree, Nick. Anything to add?
Yeah, I have one question. So Hank, you said the total square footage is the total amount that's over the amount that's allowed, right? And that includes from the past renovation.
That's, that's correct.
What is the square footage of just the new space?
Approximately three hundred and ninety square feet roughly.
Okay.
The house is at Sidspree, just, uh, just so that you're aware, is already over.
Right.
And that happened back in nineteen eighty-six. And then obviously the zoning ordinance went into play and then the others, the next thing, it's also went into play. And as a result, they no longer meet the criteria for that. So, um, having said that, what they're trying to do is they're trying to add on this space. Um, but the concept is, is that in order to grant them this, you, you can't grant them this without granting what's in the middle.
What's already there, right.
It doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
So basically what you would be doing, if you granted the variance for the plan as drawn, uh, it would, it would, uh, legitimize, if you will, the square footage that wasn't accounted for or lost in the zoning ordinance.
In the old reno. Yeah. I mean, it's just, you had made mention, basically the, the additional square footage is what they're lacking in the basement. So.
That three hundred and ninety rough square feet equates to what they're missing out of the basement, which would have been the space that the house would have had.
Yeah. So that to me, I feel like is meaningful. Helps me understand.
How deep is the crawl space today? How much clearance is there?
I'm going to guess, and Andy, you can, uh, you know, chime in if you, if you have the actual figures, but I'm going to guess it's two to three feet.
I, I haven't been in the crawl space. John, do you know? Have you been in there?
It's roughly two to three feet.
That's typical.
Yeah, thanks. So it's not something you could easily access.
So I guess the only question I have, uh, not necessarily pertaining to the plans, but to my understanding in the last zoning meeting, the intent was for the residents to go to the planning board and then come back. And I'm just curious on why, why that didn't happen.
We got our planning commission application, uh, just the other day. So we did not get it in time to schedule it for the, um, um, May, for the April meeting. So it will go on the May meeting. With meetings like this, we have Open Meetings Act and we have legal notice requirements. The legal notice requirements for this meeting encourage, uh, also say that it has to be advertised in the newspaper and notice has to be given uh, prior to the meeting within a certain timeframe. And we could not do that based on when we got that. So the result is, is that it's either back here um, for your approval, pending planning commission approval, or it goes to the planning commission pending CBA approval. So at this point in time, um, if you have a, uh, if, if you have any reservations about the plan or if you have any questions about the plan, now would be the time to go ahead and ask the architect. Um, if it, if it does not get CBA approval and they go to the planning commission and they don't get approval there, they'll obviously have to modify the plan in any way, shape or form. If they get CBA approval, then they go to the planning commission, assuming and that guaranteed that they get planning commission approval. Then the project can get in the ground faster. So it's a timeframe issue as far as construction for the season.
Understood. Thanks, Hank.
Yep.
Mitch?
Yeah, I, I have a couple. I'm confused about what to do about this. And I think we were left confused at the end of the prior meeting. We're hoping for some clarification, but it sounds like the same argument is basically being recycled. Um, first of all, as to the existing overage, that's really legally non-conforming space. I think it's wrong to describe it as what we would do is legitimizing the overage. If we were to vote to approve the variance, it's really, they have a right to have it there. It was there before the zoning law change. It, it, the only impact might be if there were, if the house burned down and they wanted to rebuild. At which point they might lose the right to build the, up to the existing square footage.
Which would be why we would.
Yeah. So I, I don't, that's right. But I mean, the legal effect is more remote as to the difference between twenty-seven fifty and the thirty-one hundred or whatever the current actual square footage is. Um, just as a sideline. In terms of practical difficulty, I don't think it's correct to say that the lack of closets is a practical difficulty. That's just a, a problem that's trying to be solved. And the practical difficulty, to the extent I, I've seen two arguments. Number one, you can't build it smaller because it's just structurally the wrong way to go to build over half a garage. And secondly, some kind of argument about the basement. But my question after all this is, is the lack of, of a full basement mean that this, that if the basement were larger, that it would be used for the storage that is contemplated to be used by this addition? Or is that just a, you know, a convenient argument, but not really related to the interest in building, uh, you know, a walk-in closet, et cetera, on the second floor?
Uh, am I, can I speak to that or is this something that? Certainly, yes. It would be used for storage, just as I suggested. It may look like a walk-in closet, but truly we lack storage. We have a lot of things, having two adult children again. And some of them have moved away and come back and it does lack space to put things. Um, I know it doesn't sound like it, but when you have a small basement and you don't have any place to put things, it is difficult to maintain that. I, I.
You don't have an attic, by the way.
I don't have an attic.
Okay. Um. Yeah, I mean, it just happened to say walk-in closet on the plan, but my mistake. So that's where I got that idea. The, I, I don't know. I, I think it's, uh, we, it would be a stretch for us. Finally comment. I, I'm always inclined to approve things based on some kind of clever interpretation. But, um, you know, this is a difficult one, right? It's just, I mean, basically somebody said last week. It's just, I mean, basically, somebody said last week, the house is too small for your needs.
It it's not so easy, though, to just get a new house. I know that's an answer.
I I don't. I'm not trying to be glib. I just want to make my point. I'm just saying, we're searching for a legal angle to hang our hat on.
I I'm not trying to. I feel like I'm not trying to ask so much, but I do understand I have to conform. I'm trying to find a way to make it work. I've tried to shrink the footprint. I'm giving you my best argument. And I do think my lot size is because it's not rectangular, makes it look like I don't get as much square footage as everybody else, because I look at my neighbors, they certainly have bigger lots. You're right. I bought this house, and that's what I have to live with. But I think sometimes compromise works.
What does the lot size have to do with the size of the house? Is that the way it's calculated?
They they do get a lot size bonus when you're doing calculations for maximum house size. But if you'll take a look at when I don't know if you still have the figures that I gave you last time with this. Let's see, but the the figures that I gave you at the last meeting with this was their house, their lot size is 8,559 square feet. The neighbor to the south is 13,125 square feet, and the neighbor to the north is 9,783 square feet. And Mr. Steinberg comes in, obviously, at the 8,559.
You know, I was gonna observe that over the past number of years, more recent years, it seems like more and more of the appeals are focused on building bigger. And, you know, the number of appeals with fences and all sorts of other issues about setbacks are becoming less. And we just have more and more appeals of people who, for reasons, like contemporary lifestyle or what have you, want bigger homes. This is normally addressed in in amendments to the zoning ordinance. And I know we're in the midst of a master plan process. I don't know if that's being considered. I mean, I'll just say, speaking to the members of the zoning board, if if everyone wants to support this, I would support it. I think that there are two ways of justifying. Number one, people want more storage space, so let's give them more storage space, kind of as a kindness. The second is to argue that implicit in the zoning ordinance is a a notion, an understanding that the house size assumes that people have a full basement, which is not counted in the square footage that's allowed. So that if someone has a half a basement, they're really being deprived of a useful component of the house that is not count counted in house size, but the whoever passed the zoning ordinance to set this formula assumed was there. Well, we could. Maybe that's a fiction, maybe it isn't. But at least if we went on that basis, it would be a some somewhat colorable argument for a variance. That's as far as I can go.
I could get behind the second statement, Mitch.
No.
This is Jim. I had a comment, maybe another question for the architect and owner. You know, the zoning board, we're here to determine if there's practical difficulty in meeting the the ordinance. I I don't believe we're here to rewrite the ordinance. The the second the second was is a question. You know, I see the current design with a garage, a smaller garage with probably minimal attic space. Was there any other design attempted to possibly increase attic space in in the in the maybe this is partially a question for Hank, too, is at what point does a larger garage attic become a living space?
Okay, um, I can answer that. Well, let me let me give my explanation for that off the off the bat. The room ties in off of a hallway for the master suite upstairs. The reason for that is, is that's where they need the square footage. So I wouldn't call it an attic. It's actually a room. What they're putting in there is a full-fledged room. They may use it for storage. They may use it for a sitting room. They may use it for whatever. But it's a legitimate room. And as when it's completed, will count for the maximum square footage of the house and also will count as housing square footage on the tax rolls. So that area will be considered house. There wouldn't be the differentiation between like a garage storage above the garage or anything like that unless it was physically in the garage. So that would be the thing that you do. Other than that, that's that's going to be considered square footage regardless.
Unfinished attic space is not counted as house square footage?
That is correct.
I have a question. Hank, last time I remember, you kind of made mention about certain modifications allow, like almost points or allowances or something such as like adding windows. That definitely looked like there were more windows.
Yeah, that that's a planning commission issue. And what happens is, is that if there's at least 20% fenestration on each side, that gives them X number of square feet more towards the house. Okay? So there's two schools of thought with how this can work, Bree. One is they haven't added enough windows to gain 20% fenestration on each side, so they wouldn't be allocated that space at the planning commission. The benefit of going to the planning commission first is, is that if they qualify for some of these things, the number that you allocate will go down for square footage or a variance will go down. There's no question, assuming they pass it and they comply with the plan. As it sits right now, based on what they've done, I'm not convinced that there would be anything that would change the planning commission's view of what it is. When I did the calculations, I calculated the 2750 based on those calculations for the planning commissions. That's how we got to that figure. So if those were to change by them adding more fenestration on each side, and they could pick up that other square footage, then that may be fine. So that's the benefit of going to the planning commission first and coming back to the zoning board. So that's another consideration, too. But as it stands right now, the calculations stand of what they're allowed, and that wouldn't change until they substantively change the elevations.
Hank, isn't the isn't there a bonus limit for this fenestration of windows? And is that already?
600 square feet.
Beyond what's?
600 square feet. They're they're automatically started at 2,500 square feet for that zone district. So that would take them to 3,100 square feet if they assuming they got all of the bonuses, which they don't qualify for right now. And then they would go through, at that point, any lot coverage bonus that they might get on top of that. So if they were to qualify for all of those, the figure that they would be asking you for tonight would be reduced.
Okay, so just to be clear, the current ask of, I believe, it's 3,433 square feet is still beyond what they could potentially receive had they got all the bonuses.
They're gonna need a variance either way, it appears.
A material variance. It's not just a few feet, even with the bonuses.
No, there well, it'll be a few feet because the materials the planning commission would approve translate into square foot bonuses.
Right, understood. But I mean,
Okay.
maybe it would be at least 200 or 300 square feet.
It it could be substantially less, could be. It won't be more.
I mean, the the physical impact isn't too different. Even if it were built out of the original proposal, you know, completely on the same footprint as the garage. Or if they pushed it in a couple of feet, you know, the bonuses are are numbers on paper that come and go. But I mean, the house is what it is. So physically, it I mean, from my point of view, if we approved the variance, it wouldn't matter if we approved it for what we see tonight, what we saw last time. The question is, is there a rationale?
Absolutely.
The size seems less important because we're not talking about 10 extra square feet. You know, something minimal.
That's correct.
Go ahead, Nick.
All right, I don't have a question.
I'm looking for a motion. Anyone has one?
You you might at this point in time ask if the applicant has anything else that they want to add.
Sure. Just be Mr. Mostif or Mr. And or Mr. Steinberg. Do you guys have anything further?
Only that I do appreciate that I've done this. I was at the last meeting, and I do understand that there's a process, and I'm trying to work within those that process. I would really appreciate it if you would approve this. That's really all I have to add.
I'd like to make mention that one of the I don't know if it would qualify as a paradox of this conversation is doesn't really affect the footprint of the of the house. Footprint of the house can be what we want it to be. Because the garage can be doesn't count towards square footage and can be built really even larger than we're proposing. And that the addition isn't gonna really have an impact on lot coverage. Previous impervious area. It's not going to cast shadows on anyone, any neighbor's property. Not going to be looking in through anyone else's window. It's a very innocuous addition. Architects don't like to describe their work as innocuous, but anyways. And, you know, it it just becomes a numbers game. And having an impact on people's other people's lives. The only people whose lives will be impacted are the Steinbergs.
Well. I I'm ready with a motion.
A quick question, Jim, don't mind. Maybe this could help. So any any very any variance, you know, sticks with the land. And what I'm looking at is, you know, if we're allowing a larger square footage on this land, you know, down the road, that same square footage to be could be used in a way that that eats away more lot coverage, et cetera. So.
Jim, I just want to clarify. The space that they're talking about is above existing structure and would not expand beyond the existing structure. So lock coverage would not be affected.
Yeah, that's what I that's kind of what I'm getting at. I I guess what I'm getting at is, is there a way to submit a an approval that would restrict existing lot coverage to not expand beyond the current?
Well, that I think it's that the law governs that. It's already baked into the legal requirement.
Are they are they already beyond that?
Oh, no, they're not. And Jim, that's that's for the clarification. I see where your confusion is. They're above the maximum house size. Their lot coverage is fine, so they wouldn't be doing that. If they did need to exceed the lot coverage for a project five or 10 years down the road, they'd be back here before you for a lot coverage hearing, which is not why they're here this evening. So you could make a motion to tie in the plan as it's drawn, not to exceed that for the addition. But you can't restrict the lock coverage to something less than what they're entitled to by the zoning ordinance.
But Hank, they're hemmed in anyway, because if they wanted to build another room, it would count as additional square footage that took up more surface area of the lot, they'd still have to come back for a variant.
Not if they didn't run over the lock coverage. So in other words, they could they could put a lot. They could put a room on the back of their garage. It'd be a workshop that would be attached only to the garage. That would affect lock coverage, but not affect maximum.
So that wouldn't be, you mean, a room
That's correct.
counted as house because it was some kind of utility.
Exactly. Right, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, Hank, I think you answered my my question. I was looking for a way to, you know, figure out a way to make it happen.
Okay.
I I'm ready with a motion if we're ready for one. For a motion, you had called for a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve. And I guess at at this tonight's submitted design, the reasoning is a newly discovered implied understanding in the zoning ordinance that maximum house size is tied to the view that the house in question would have a full basement and not a partial basement, such that any addition to a house designed to add a use that otherwise could be met by a larger basement such as storage could be met in a in this variance for a larger above-ground room. So we would now create a permanent policy-driven variance based on small basements in the relation to house size. Which I think is fair.
I second that motion.
In a second. Second, it comes from Nick. All in favor? Say aye.
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 So the second. So we have five yays and one nays.
Yays and a nay.
Okay. Mr. Steinberg, your.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
You will have to go to the planning commission, and it is subject, as it said, to this plan. So you will have to meet any of the planning commission criteria, but your spatial arrangements are approved.
Thank you very, very much. Very much appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your floor is yours for the next.
We move to the next appeal from this is from Main Street Design Build on behalf of the Krasnick family for a variance to the lot coverage ordinance for a house at 26041 Salem. Article four District Regulation, Section 40 dash 4.03 dash R1A through R1E1 Family District Schedule of Regulations. The request is for a variance in lot coverage of 288 square feet to allow a maximum coverage of 2,538 square feet. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name's Steve Ramikers. I'm president and owner of Main Street Design Build, and I'm here with the Krasnicks, Bobby and Jane Krasnick. And I was hired by them to design and build them a new garage and outdoor covered living space. And I'm able to share a screen, too?
You are.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay. So motivations for this project are is that their current two-car garage, and that exists right here in the space. You can see the lot layout here. The current garage is in total disrepair, and at a minimum, here needs to be replaced. And in addition to this, you know, during the COVID quarantine, the Krasnicks felt that they they really needed a place that they could congregate and relax with family and friends that allowed them to social distance. So that being said, we designed a replacement two-car garage with an attached covered porch area. So the garage exists in this area here, which is a little bit larger than the current garage, meet some of their storage demands that they have. And then you can see that we have over in this area an attached covered porch. The variance that we're requesting, we meet all of the setback requirements, and we meet the rear yard coverage. What we are lacking is we were requesting a variance for approximately a 3% increase to the overall lot coverage to accommodate this this covered porch. So so we're what we're doing to it, and I'll show you a little bit more in detail of this, but what we are we're doing is we're actually improving the. we're doing is we're actually improving the impervious coverage area that exists in this rear yard by removing a large paper brick patio that currently exists and butts up to the driveway here. So we're actually completely removing this portion out so that grass can be planted and, you know, thereby giving better areas for the water to the way. So the hardship that we're seeing is that this this lot is a little bit unique to most in the neighborhood is that it has a shared common driveway. And what that creates in this this scenario is very little privacy in their rear yard. I mean, they're literally coexisting with their neighbor in their rear yard. So and we're also, you know, seeing the way that the second floors are sorry, the two story homes behind just really get a get a view right back down into their yard there. And so they're really looking to be able to have a place that affords them a little bit of privacy. So let me give you a little better idea of what we're trying to achieve here. And maybe this picture here will illustrate, you know, just more of an overhead shot of where you can see this is the Krasnick's property right here, the two driveways. About one another. And like I say, their their rear yards with their neighbor, just you kind of coexist there. So so this is how the driveways literally just just come together here. This is the proposed area that we are asking to build the the open covered porch in. So what we're building, you can see we've got a garage that is twenty six by twenty two. And then adding off to the side of it where which will afford them some privacy is a twelve by twenty two covered patio area. We're designing it in a way that it matches the materials on the home, a brick front facade. And then siding to match the home around the back and two sides of the structure. And then to show you a little more of the rendered views. And if you can put into perspective where the the other house sits, you could see that by tucking the covered porch off of this area that would afford the Krasnick some nice privacy in their backyard and also the two story homes then that exist right behind them won't be able just to see down into into that room. So this is this is what we are proposing to the board tonight, and I do want to give the Krasnicks an opportunity to speak particularly on what their needs are.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I think Steve summed it up. We obviously wanted through the pandemic, our our three daughters were home for close to a year for working remotely and online school with one of them. And when their friends would come over, we were somewhat limited to putting a heater inside the garage and you know, gathering outside and whenever we were with them, we we not only and we love our neighbors. Eric is on this call right now, but you know, just there's just absolutely no privacy for them to gather and and so this was kind of our solution. I mean, I think it's just very basic. There's really
You really can't exist in the backyard without neighbors, you know, kind of in a sense peering in. But so there's really no nowhere to have any privacy in the backyard without making some type of change.
Although we love our neighbors. We love you, Eric.
Steve, could I ask you to take this down?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if you'd like me to proceed.
Go ahead, Hank.
Thank you.
Okay, so this house actually is, I'll explain, is actually kind of near and dear to my heart and this house is built in nineteen sixty eight. The house originally is a brick coin brick colonial. The porch was not there and neither was the rear addition. It was one of the consistently styled styled brick colonials with a hip roof that was common to that era when it was built in the sixties, but had upscaled elements designed with it, at least for the interior. The appeal basically is is that they want to allow the two hundred eighty eight square feet for a total maximum lot coverage of two thousand five hundred and thirty eight. The criteria are important and I'll get into them here where it says special and unique conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, the structure or building involved, which are not generally applicable to other lands, structures or buildings of the same district. The Krasnick home again, built in nineteen sixty eight. At the time it was built, the city already had allowed houses on either side. As you can see from the following slide, both neighbors already had their houses and drives situated so that both driveways were abutting the Krasnick property. If you take a look at the survey over here, you can see where my car is. That's the Krasnick house. The other side house on this side had the driveway going up to the existing garage here. And this house had a shared driveway over here. I learned a lot about building from this particular house and the problems that this had. Next to this is the application for the new house that was built in this location and the problems that they had. And when I say I mean, I learned a lot about building from this house. If you can see the signature on the bottom of the building permit, you'll see that it's my father that built this house. So the interesting part about it is is that when he and I remember when I was a kid growing up sweeping out houses of his for allowance money that this house came up because it was always there was a driveway on this side. Well, it wouldn't matter where you situated the house. There would be a driveway on the other side. You would always going to have a driveway a budding a driveway in this house. The issue then becomes the people in this house always have a view to here. So you either have cars or people in and out of cars here all the time where you normally wouldn't have it with the staggered driveways. If that was flipped around, you would have it here on the other side. However, even though there's a fence here, you can't count on the fence always being here, but these people here would have a clear view into this. So basically, there was no place for this house to go in the backyard and no place for these people to go in the backyard without being seen from one or both of these. That's not a shared problem that each neighbor has because each one of them has a little different location and a little different configuration. So this house here, because you can see the way that it is and it has a little bit of a curve in here, they have a place that they can be tucked away. This back here is a staircase. They have no place to go where they don't have any privacy. They mentioned the two story to the back and that's one of the reasons for the roof. Okay, I can buy into that, but I can tell you that this particular house here was always considered an issue because of that. Now, how do we get into that? Let me get to this first and then the next criteria will come back to that. The variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the general welfare. To date, I've had no communications from either way, although we do have neighbors sign on this evening. So if they have something to say, then the board could, of course, entertain that. Special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. At the time of approval, the neighboring driveways again were already in place as were the garages. The builder or owner at the time would have been adversely affected by privacy issues either way. The proximity of the two adjacent driveways significantly impacts the privacy. This was decided on and approved in October of nineteen sixty eight. The lot was a buildable lot and approved in accordance with the City of Huntington Woods rules at the time. As you can see, it's signed off on the bill by the building inspector at that time. Number four, a literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of this ordinance and that the variance is the minimum necessary. The lot is an outlier. Most block faces have driveway, house, driveway, et cetera, as does the rest of this block. At the time it was built, people tended to spend more time in the front rather than in the back. Where a stoop was where people would sit and talk to passersby as they went by. When the house was built, it originally was a brick colonial with standard details. The addition was put on in two thousand and one, didn't change anything in the backyard. The focus has changed over the years to backyard living, which is now a trend all over. As a result, the Krasniks find themselves in the position of having less privacy than their neighbors as a result of the irregular configuration of the driveways abutting their property. Allowing the additional square foot of coverage would allow them to have a patio in the least visible position from the neighbors, but it requires additional lock coverage to achieve. This right here, if you take a look, this is a overview and aerial expanded. Steve had put one up showing just the lots and the lot next door, which is this here. But if you take a look, you've got driveway, house, driveway, house, driveway, 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 house, driveway, house, driveway, house. They never had an opportunity that everybody else on the block has with that. When you take a look at this area over here, which you see there's a driveway here and a driveway here, but that's a peninsula lot. So it's considerably different and it doesn't have the same criteria. So those are a couple of things to consider when you're taking a look at this. And also, if you take a look at the back here, you can see that the driveway here is a side driveway, which wouldn't matter, but you have driveway, house, driveway, house, driveway, house. So by doing that, and if you take a look and go back to the criteria four, they don't have the same opportunities that all the other people do on the block. So as a result, I bring that up for your consideration with this. And that was a pleasant surprise when I did find the building. If you have any questions, I'm sure the Krasniks are available to answer as the Steve Remickers and I'm certainly happy to answer anything that I might be able to.
And Mr. Barry, I can put my comments to the board right now if you'd like.
That's up to the chair.
Just hey, I I one one quick question from for me. With respect to, I'm just trying to picture. So the back, if you go out the back of the house, is there like a deck or anything right now?
There's just There's steps down. I think I have that where I can show you. Yeah.
But any sort of like, any sort of building off the back of the house wouldn't give them the kind of privacy that they're looking for, right? Because you still have you still have the neighbors next door with the driveway and there's no fence or anything.
Right. And even if you did that, you would still run into a lot coverage.
Okay.
So they're going to need that, whatever it is, no matter anyway. So what they're asking for is in the area back over here and then, you know, before Steve or I may be answering what he's going to address anyway. But this area back in through here is perhaps the least visible area. And then what they're looking for is they're looking for two hundred eighty eight square feet, which is about realistically just a little over one car parking place, which are typically ten by twenty. So if you look at that, that's like two hundred square feet. So basically they're asking for a portion which is not as big as half of their existing garage. Or it's about half their existing garage to use as a outdoor refuge, if you will.
And then going back to the garage, they're building a new garage at the same time. Is this?
That is correct.
Is that part of the issue here or is it the garage building?
No, the garage that they're doing meets the lock coverage. It's unique in Huntington Woods. Well, I don't want to say unique because I'm sure there's other places to do it. But we have set asides, minimum set asides for garages based on the lock coverage. So the reason that we do that is is that I wouldn't want him to command, you know, and have Mr. Ramikers come in here and say, well, I'm going to build a hundred and eighty square foot garage so I can have that patio and then I'll be back next week because I have a substandard garage. We would have the set aside anyway. So if they're going to build a garage, whether they build it that size or not, they get charged, if you will, for that square footage.
Okay.
Question?
Go ahead, Mitch.
So some discussion was made in the application about replacing a paved patio with this this covered paved area next to the garage. So is it fair to say that conceptually the only difference in terms of of impervious area, which I take to be one of the rationales for the lot coverage issue, is that you're putting a roof over something?
That is correct.
So the the fact that there's a big paved patio doesn't count in lot coverage, but this would count in lot cover.
That is correct.
Those are the roof.
That is correct.
But there's both of them have a paved surface sitting on the ground.
That is correct.
So the argument, there is some reason to the argument that in effect, e- even though the regulation doesn't quite allow it, you're replacing one paved surface by another, which is smaller.
I I would I would guess and perhaps Steve Ramikers could bear this out, the amount of square footage of patio that they're removing is probably equal to or greater than the amount of covered area that they're proposing.
It's because they said they're if they're going to greenify it and it'll be nicer that way.
Yeah.
Actually, the the amount that we're removing is larger than the proposed covered patio.
Yeah, that that's what it looked like.
So in terms of dilatarius impact, there really is no major impact. You know, materially adverse impact with respect to the, at least one of the purposes of regulating lot area coverage.
Right, that that is correct.
So which if you add that to this very peculiar situation with shared driveway, which I in my mind qualifies as a genuine practical difficulty. It's it seems like reasonable argument that this could be approved.
Do you want to hear from the neighbor?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public participation.
Oh, you ready?
Yep.
All right, I'm the neighbor next door, Eric Sturbis, and I I support the Krasnick's proposal for the variance. They've shared the ideas and the conception of of what's going to be constructed. I think it's going to look great. On a practical matter, we plan on putting up a basketball hoop in a matter of maybe a year or two for our son. And it's going to come down to the point where, you know, if I see them outside on their current, you know, area, you know, our son or myself may not feel like we want to go out and shoot hoops on our driveway out of fear of you know, being annoying and and vice versa. If we're out on the driveway, they may not want to enjoy their back patio. So I I think from a privacy standpoint, you can't get much more greater than the circumstances that currently exist and that they offer no privacy at all. And I think, you know, what's being proposed, I think is going to look great and we support it.
Okay, great. Thank thank you very much. Is there anyone else on from the public that that wants to speak on this appeal? Hearing none, I'm gonna close public participation, open it up to the rest of the board for questions, a discussion and 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 or and or emotion.
Yeah, I just want to say I agree with what Mitch said.
It looked like Jim had his hand raised.
Yeah, just a question, a comment and a question. One, I I have a house with a narrow lot. Two driveways that are together or not, it's it's always a problem having space across the width of the lot when you have fifty foot lot. And the question is more relating to the garage size so that how much of that variance that's being requested is the garage footprint itself?
None.
I think it showed the existing garage was twenty two by twenty two and the new one is twenty six by twenty two? Am I saying that correctly?
If it was, if we were just applying for the garage, the twenty six by twenty two garage, it would fit within the requirements. So it's just basically size of the covered porch is the variance request.
is the variance request.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Rick.
Is there grass to be or something like not, I I don't remember what the word is, like something like that absorbs water better on the other side of the covered patio? If you have the garage, then the patio and then on the other side, there's a little bit of space there, like a little strip. Will there be trees or grass or something?
There is currently, if I'm understanding it correctly, are you talking about the opposite side of the garage or to adjacent to the new covering porch?
Opposite side of the garage.
Yeah, so currently, and let's see if I can pull pictures, I believe there's just all crushed stone in there right now, which would allow for is that correct, Bobby, Jane?
Yes. You're talking about between the between the garages?
Yeah, this is great. Is the green space or it's it's an open space, dirt and vines and probably gravel.
So in between the two garages is dirt and rocks and okay. And then what about on the other side of the patio?
Here.
That's what we're talking about. Other side of the patio is the space between the two garages.
Can I?
Show. I need a picture, yeah.
I I do have a picture too, if you don't.
I do. You can see this area here. And this is what they're talking about. So if you follow my cursor, can everybody see? So right here, that's the area that would be crushed stone, correct? And then back here would be in the back area here would be grass, gravel, or some kind of pervious surface. Attached to the side of this approximately where my cursor is would be their proposed patio with pervious surface here.
Okay, so you just answered my question. It's on the other side of the
Yes, it's a
Yeah.
Trees and grass and
Okay.
Now, on this side over here, even if you approve the location, there's still building codes that they would have to comply with. So this wall on this side may have to be a fire rated wall, depending on how close it is to the existing garage on the other side. That's an issue for the building contractor, not for zoning board.
Can they also add area where you see the existing patio that's going to be removed, that will be replaced with grass?
That'll also pick up a substantive part of pervious surface. And also, even if they decided at a later time to put a walkway out to that patio, it still wouldn't impact that because actually that 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 would you're you're still nowhere near fifty percent of your lock coverage at that point for the rear yard, but you are going to be over that. But that does not count towards what they're looking for tonight. It would have nothing to do with it. Even if they did put a walkway in later.
Hank, I'd like to go back to the size of the garage. The current garage size was twenty two feet across. The new one shows twenty six feet across. So of that two hundred and eighty eight square feet variance they're asking for, the question I want to ask is if the garage did not expand beyond the current dimension, could we possibly approve a lesser variance than two eighty eight, more like two hundred?
Well, the the survey that I actually Steve, if I I'm going to put you back to sharing, if you could put up your architectural. Okay. All right. And then can you can you get me to the dimension at the back here that shows twenty six one?
That's at the bottom.
There you go. So, okay, so what you're looking at here is that would still qualify for code for what the garage is for that size. And that would be within the space that they would be allocated. What they're asking for every bit, yes, if they made a smaller garage, could they have a lesser variance? Yes, but they the space that they would have, you couldn't go below the size that they were posing anyway because of the set aside for garages. You follow what I'm saying?
What what do you mean you couldn't go below the size?
Right, but it's not an existing garage. Now they're going to they're proposing a new garage. The new garage falls into the category size wise of what is allowed. So there if they were to take off that, just build the garage, they could do that. So the two hundred and eighty eight square feet encompasses what you're allowed for their garage plus their proposed patio.
Correct. But the question here is a question of total lock coverage.
No, but Hank, are you saying that they get charged for the extra four feet of garage, whether or not they use it?
Yes.
So that even if they built twenty two feet wide rather than twenty six and use, they couldn't use that four feet as part of the patio because they it would it would be double counted, so to speak.
That's exact, that's exactly correct.
Seems a little weird, but okay.
The reason the reasoning behind it is is that you get allowed for each zone district, you get like an R one E, you got to have a minimum four hundred foot, your four hundred square foot garage, whether you have that. R one D, you got to have four hundred and forty. R one C, you got to have a minimum of four eighty. R one, you know, and it goes on and on from there.
All right. So it doesn't matter. The point is they might as well build the twenty six foot wide.
That's exactly the point.
I'm looking for a motion.
Adam, this is Joe. I'd like to make a motion, move to grant the appeal from Main Street, the Main Street Design Bill on behalf of the Krasnick family for a variance to the lot coverage ordinance, Article Four District Regulations, Section forty dash four point zero three dash R one A through R one E, one family district, schedule of regulations. This request is for variance in lot coverage of two hundred eighty eight square feet to allow a maximum coverage of two thousand five hundred and thirty eight square feet.
Is there a second?
Second.
I I'm sorry, I don't have the whole screen. Who who said second?
Could you could you take down the graphic?
Jim, go for it.
There you go.
All right, thanks. I'd like to second Jim Park here.
If second from Jim, all in favor? I think that's six six years, Hank. No.
Thank you.
The motion passes and the appeal is granted. Moving on the agenda, other other business, Hank, anything else?
At this point in time, I don't have anything set up for the zoning board other than we will be continuing to involve the zoning board in the master plan when it's appropriate for comment. A lot of what we have here, we take to the zoning board, to the planning commission with the master plan. Ideally, you want to build your master plan and have your zoning ordinance sync with the master plan. And that's what we're doing right now. So it's a big undertaking. And then at the end of that, we may be revisiting some of the codicils and some of the criteria in the zoning ordinance to make it a more cohesive document and maybe to remove some of the things that you see on a regular basis. So that's that's kind of where we're at with that. But at this point in time, Mr. Chair, I have nothing further.
All right, thanks, Hank. I will like to open it up to public participation. Hearing and seeing none, I will close public participation. And now I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Thanks, Joe. We have a second?
Okay.
Nick, all in favor? Hi. All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Everyone.